Hey guys. If you don't mind, we're gonna get started. You can continue timing if we actually are gonna have to step away again and give you more time anyway, so I'm gonna get started so that I'm not waiting. You're not waiting. So we can keep the time and you'll have to wait as short as possible. So with that, I would like to call to order the June 28 regular meeting for the School of Education. Ashley, can you please take the role?
This is Bruce.
Here.
This is Ben.
Here.
This is Garvey.
Here.
This is Miller.
Oh, sorry. She's got me.
She gets...
Sorry, I'm just... Say it here.
Here.
If you'd all please start from the stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to approve agenda item 1.03, minutes for 5:17 and 5:31. Can I have a second? I'll second. Any comments, questions? Ashley, please take the role.
This is Bruce.
Yes.
This is Ben.
Yes.
This is Garvey.
Yes.
This is Matt.
Dr. Schaller.
Yes.
I move to approve agenda item 1.04, minutes for the 5:20 meeting. Any questions? Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Ashley, please take the role.
This is Bruce.
Yes.
This is Ben.
Yes.
This is Garvey.
Abstain.
This is Miller.
Yes.
Dr. Schaller.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session. Wait, it's gonna... Sorry, I should have told you I'm taking another one. Okay. Okay. The next item on our agenda is executive session. I move to enter into executive session to consider the following check marked items with respect to a public employee or official. Discipline and the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual. Could I have a second? I'll second. The board will now enter into executive session for that first purpose. We do plan to return from executive session, take action, and continue the meeting. Quick comments. My caller will take the role.
This is Bruce.
Yes.
This is Ben.
Yes.
This is Garvey.
Yes.
This is Miller.
Yeah. Dr. Schaller.
Yes.
That's pretty good. I didn't even have to do the last one. All right, moving along to agenda item 3, board recommendations. The next item on the agenda is the board's determination regarding the outcome of a complaint against Dr. Kunsarski investigated by a third-party investigator pursuant to Board Policy and Regulation KLD and KLDR. The board reviewed and considered the investigative report issued by the investigator in executive session. I move that the board find the complaint against Dr. Kunsarski to be unsubstantiated based on the results of the district's investigation and that the board president and treasurer be authorized to take any and all action reflecting the board's determination on the matter, including but not limited to issuing a letter to the parties reflecting the board's determination. Can I have a second? I'll second. Does anyone have any additional questions or comments? Please remember that no students personally identify all information may be shared in open session. Okay. It is moved and seconded that the board find the complaint against Dr. Kunsarski to be unsubstantiated. Ashley, please take the role.
This is Bruce.
Yes.
This is Ben.
Yes.
This is Garvey.
Yes.
This is Miller.
Yes.
Dr. Schaller.
Yes.
Number 3.02. The next item on the agenda is the board's determination regarding the outcome of a complaint against Mr. Howell as investigated by a third-party investigator pursuant to Board Policy and Regulation KLD and KLDR. The board reviewed and considered the investigative report issued by the investigator in executive session. I move that the board find the complaint against Mr. Howell to be unsubstantiated based on the results of the district's investigation and that the board president, superintendent, and treasurer be authorized to take any and all action reflecting the board's determination on the matter, including but not limited to issuing a letter to the parties reflecting the board's determination. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
It is moved and seconded that the board find the complaint against Mr. Howell to be unsubstantiated. Does anyone have any additional questions or comments? Please remember not to... All right, Ashley, please take the role.
This is Bruce.
Yes.
This is Ben.
Yes.
This is Garvey.
Yes.
This is Miller.
Yes.
Dr. Schaller.
Yes.
Since we have a large crowd here tonight, you might be interested in a little more information around what just occurred. These investigations resulted from two separate formal complaints submitted to the board by a family in the district, one against a building principal and one against our superintendent. The board takes all complaints very seriously, and when a complaint is filed under any number of laws or policies, a thorough investigation is carried out regardless of the individuals involved in the complaint. The circumstances associated with each investigation are unique and can result in extension of timelines beyond the district's control. The district's goal is and will continue to be to carry out full and thorough investigations as efficiently as possible in order to arrive at an accurate result while keeping in mind fairness to all parties involved. When allegations are substantiated, disciplinary action is applied, and when allegations are unsubstantiated, as in the case tonight, the district moves forward always looking for opportunities to improve our practices. Would anyone else like to say anything about what we did?
I think this is in the policy update, but I'll talk about it now just to add on to what you just said. We have a policy that requires us to follow certain procedures when there is a claim or an investigation needs to be required. These things have, on many occasions, an automatic trigger which begins an investigation, and it does not matter who the investigation is brought against. In this case, it was our superintendent and building principal. We follow policy. This has been a multiple-month investigation. There are multiple laws, federal, state laws, and in fact, if you're following what's going on in the state of Ohio right now, there are a whole lot of new ways that schools are about to be able to be sued under some of those laws. We look at these policies. We try to determine if the balance is correct. But we are a very heavily regulated industry, and we protect children. So when these claims are made, there's a balance to be had and investigations are performed. And that's simply the way the world is right now post-pandemic, and it seems to be continuing in that direction.
Yeah, I would just add, I mean, it's pretty clear that no one is immune. That we would take any complaint against any district official extremely seriously, and we conduct professional investigations, very thorough investigations. With regard to tonight's decision, we have had the professional report for several days to digest and really take into account what the investigator found. And I think it was very clear in his recommendation, that was very well substantiated, that there was no one involved here.
These reports do become a matter of public record. If anyone is interested in them, you need to make a public records request. I have your treasurer about to be, Ashley, who would know through email. All right. Moving along, we are going to district advisory reports. Could I please have an update on the curriculum?
So I heard that you not know, because my children have graduated, the SAT is going completely online in 2024. We give the SAT and the entire suite of assessments to kids every August, February. Particularly interesting coming out of strategic planning, because one of the things we talked about with other districts was... I'm not close enough to the microphone. Something we learned when we talked to other districts was that many schools will use the data that we collect to reverse engineer and to look at what's happening. You know, for example, if they identify that there's an issue with processing certain types of reading comprehension, or they see certain weaknesses because there's a lot of detail that comes in those reports, they'll use that data to reverse engineer that to lower grades to see if there's changes that can be made. And they started in eighth grade here. We are considering switching to the ACT. There's a whole suite of assessments that also go with the ACT. That one's gonna remain paper for the time being, but at least as of next year, the plan is to switch to the... It will be the same test, but the preparation, obviously, is a lot different for kids. So we're gonna see how it goes this year. And one of the appealing things about staying with the SAT is that it's supported by Khan Academy. They're not completely caught up yet, apparently, with the training that's gonna be necessary to do it online version. So we'll see how it goes.
Any questions? Thank you. And Laura, can you please share with the safety committee?
Yeah. So the safety committee had a meeting on June 1st. Safety committee, it's... The people on it include administrators, Board of Education, police, our SRO, and some staff. A change with this meeting was we added some more K through six teachers, admin, and staff. We felt that they had been previously underrepresented, and especially given kind of any specific issues that we had in the spring, we wanted to be sure that we were hearing from them. So we added a couple teachers who were able to come to that meeting, which is nice. The committee itself was established post-Parkland in 2018. The community members who were chosen at that time to be on the committee were chosen based on having experience in various aspects of safety, mental health experts. There was someone with FBI experience, pilot, local council members with experience with law enforcement, that kind of thing. But that was five years ago. Some community members have fallen off, haven't made it to the last couple meetings. So we think we see an opportunity there for maybe new community members to join us. So Amanda, who's Amanda Rossi, who's in charge of this committee, is going to follow up with the previous community members to see if they were interested in continuing, and has not established an application for new community members to finish that. We have been talking about, like, setting a term, so it's just like a two-year term or something, so it's not a forever sort of commitment, and maybe staggering with the terms a little bit, so not everything turns over at once. We also reviewed questions that we got from the safety forum in May. A lot of that we found distilled down to a handful of frequently asked questions. So we're going to add that to our safety portal. We already have a running on-site safety portal. shogunisschools.org under district, and then safety portal. There's a lot of resources there regarding what we do for safety. We also had a very in-depth conversation with Chief Dasek and other officers who were there regarding the police presence at the schools. We've heard from Gurney teachers that they, you know, appreciate seeing the officers around in the way that they were last spring. So we had an in-depth discussion about the differences between SROs, school resource officers, detail officers, and part-time security officers, which are just three different ways that we could cover that need. Each one having its own list of advantages and disadvantages having to do with cost and our flexibility to hire them and, you know, their role in, like, aging with the kids. So we had a good conversation about that. And at the end, we also talked about our communication regarding the safety, specifically what we are and are not allowed to communicate to our community, especially when law enforcement is involved. We have to follow their directives on that. And also ways to communicate about threat assessment and how that's handled because we feel like that's something that benefits the community to understand a little bit more about. So it was a good meeting. It went about twice the amount of time we scheduled it to last up.
Great, thank you. At this point in the meeting, I will turn the agenda over to Dr. Kunsarski for the district update.
So tonight, I really have two things to talk about. Of course, I want to talk through strategic planning and give you an update about that. And I also want to talk about the high school principal position, and I think that's where I want to start tonight. So as you know, Mr. Dan Tovich has accepted a position at Independence High School. And I just want to clarify a few things because I think there's some confusion about accepting a position versus resigning. So what's happened so far is he notified us that he has accepted a position. Once he's board-approved at the new school, then he turns in his resignation, and that is supposed to happen tomorrow. Once he officially resigns, then I accept that resignation, then things become official, then we send out communication. Because that's what's best for him, and that's we want to make sure everything goes through and everything is done. So we don't send out communications. We even don't post that we have a high school principal opening until all of that is complete and all of that is done. So what we posted on June 26th was called an anticipated high school principal opening because we knew that he had accepted a position. So I think sometimes there's some confusion in how that process works and what that looks like. So on June 26th, we started the posting. The trick with timing on these types of positions this time of year is because after July 10th, what happens is that boards of education have to give educators permission to leave their district. So prior to July 10th, anyone can resign without consequences. After July 10th, you have to get permission to leave. So where our strategy was last year was to hire the top-tier candidate, and we did a lot, I did a lot of recruiting. That timeframe is just not here for this year like it was. So the process that we've started this week, we contacted all those firms, all of the people, the network that we did before when we were able to find Mr. Dan Tovich, and started making those connections. So the position's open. We're accepting applications. We, of course, posted internally as well in case someone would like to move into that position. They're welcome to apply. And then finally, at this time of year, in the state of the game, the third component that we look for, that we advertise for, would be what we call an interim, just to be, have a safeguard. And that's in case we don't have a highly qualified candidate. Sometimes you're in a position where you would hire a person to fill for a year that has experience, usually maybe a retired principal or retired, even sometimes superintendents that have retired will come and fill a principal position. So that's the process that's been started. Once Mr. Dan Tovich is board-approved and submits his resignation letter, then we will send out a communication to the community and share that with everyone. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood the process and that everyone was aware that this is the timeline that we're on to make that decision and to hopefully to be able to find a highly qualified principal for our building. He did a fantastic job. We knew, when we recruited him last year, we were so excited because he was student-centered, and that's what we really wanted for the high school. But we also knew that the drive was gonna be challenging. We knew that. He knew that. And independence is just so much closer for him and his family. And I know that he struggled with the decision. But we're happy for him. We wish him the best in his position. He'll have, I'm sure he'll be successful in his new adventure as well. So do you have any questions about that process or...?
Just a big thank you to him because we worked closely on strategic planning. And in here, he really jumped in and made a huge difference on the high-quality learning team, which was the one I was on, but it was really pivotal at the strategic planning level, and he will be missed, and we really appreciate what he's done for us in here.
Okay. Good with that. Hopefully they'll have another update, or we'll be sending some updates along the way as we progress with that. So let's go into strategic planning a little bit. So the administrative team met last week. And so what we did was we started to draft the goals around the strategies that we chose to work on for next year. Remember, the two pieces that we want to focus on or that we decided to focus on was strategy focus area two, which was student and staff well-being. And we're also focusing on strategy four, which was a strategy that we added, a strategy focus area, and that was communication. And I know that only one person was able to come to our board work session where I explained everything about the district leadership team. But remember, the district leadership team, that group was a group of teachers and administrators, and we came together and we worked through just strategic focus area two, which was student and staff well-being and culture. Under each strategy, if you haven't really looked at the plan, there are... Each focus area, there are specific strategies that were identified in a briefing paper. And in that briefing paper, there are different recommendations, different desired futures, and all of that's on the website. You can go and read as much or as little as you'd like. And so they worked through each strategy. We had the roundtable setting, for those of you that have done that process before, and they got to go roundtable to roundtable. And there was a central office person at each table. I was on the table. And it was the same process of the big sheets of paper and the markers, and we just listened, and teachers wrote. There are ideas on the paper. There's a different strategy at each table. And we collected all that information and all those ideas. And then we took all those ideas to help draft our goals, and we used that information to help with our action steps and what we want to accomplish for next year. Jennifer, for goals, are you ready to present those at a future board meeting?
Yes. So in August, the district leadership team will get back together, and they'll look at what the administrators put together. So we'll have our goals and our action steps, and we'll see if we can get this right. So this is what we think we heard. Teacher voice is huge. This roundtable was probably the best we ever had because we actually had teachers and administrators at the table discussing these ideas for how we could improve. And so we put it all together. We'll take that back to them and see what they think. And then probably at that August 16th board meeting, hopefully everything will be ready to present. And I hope maybe some teachers or, and maybe some administrators can actually present what our district goals will be. And they'll be under those two strategic planning areas. So that was kind of the first thing we were doing.
What about the other two strategic planning areas?
So we're not ignoring high-quality learning or strategic resourcing. Buildings that building principals say this is how we're incorporating strategies from high-quality learning. So the admin team at the retreat decided we want to tackle personalized learning. And how we want to do that, one of the desired futures that came out of the high-quality learning was we need to network with districts that are truly like us. And we learned a lot of great things from interviews and from focus groups that we talked to. And so our principals decided from a K-12 perspective, we're gonna continue those partnerships with the Ohio Professional Learning Network. And we want to add the intermediate school and the high school next year. So Gurney and middle school did it this year. They'll start year two. The intermediate school and high school will start year one. And then we're gonna create a district team. Mr. Mouldman went with them, went with the first year. And then others will go this year. So we have this pilot district mindset to say, is this how we approach personalized learning? Because personalized learning was kind of embedded in what we were thinking of when we were talking about a learner profile and really talking about aspirations for knowing our student and where we wanted our students to go and where we wanted our students to be. So any way that we can engage that student voice and that teacher voice, we want to empower that. So that's where we're going with high-quality learning. And then the strategic resourcing group, they're kind of honing in on facilities and really talking about, so we have that early learning village, which is for our preschool. They've been talking about what that... They were designing playgrounds and talking about how that would be incorporated. I know that that database component, Mr. Garvey was on that committee. They were talking about how they could build that structure to be a K-12 structure. So how do we, we have all these great resources. How do we use that to benefit the entire district? So, and the one thing that I do want to share just too about all of that work, when we had that district leadership team meeting, I had sent out a communication right after that because the administrators were so excited. They said this was the best DLT we've ever had. And we were so excited, we sent out a community communication. We said we're gonna have more roundtables because this was the best teacher communication and information we'd ever received. And we'll get those scheduled. And then I A D O G, and it's an opportunity to go out in the community with me so that we can talk about this and we can share these ideas. And then we just, we kind of pulled back a little bit. And then, and then we're still planning on how we're gonna push that all out. It's just, we, we had to, we kind of have to re-group a little bit and make sure that we're doing everything according to policy and the process that we need to use. If that makes sense.
Maybe a little more specifically, guys. Is there any reason we can't go forward and do more teacher roundtables? Like, you're saying maybe we want to get specific feedback from them.
And I think it's good feedback, and I think that we do... We do want to do that. I think... I think it's really important that we have an honest conversation. As board members, as superintendent, as administrators of the district, we're held to a very high standard. The policies, the laws, and just kind of what you stated earlier that we have to follow, are pretty complicated and complex. And I think the last couple of months have been pretty challenging, just to be frank. And I think the last couple of months have been pretty challenging, just to be frank. And I've been on the fence about whether or not to talk about this, but I just think we have to. On June 9th, after that wonderful DLT meeting, I received a cease and desist letter from the Ohio Education Labor Relation Consultant that serves our district. She accused me of having direct dealing with our membership at that DLT meeting. And that said that the communication should go through Union President and O E A rep, but that whole letter had like mischaracterizations and inaccuracies and incorrect conclusions.
What does direct dealing mean?
Direct dealing is when you would engage in conversations with teachers that really relate to like wages or hours or terms and conditions of employment. They're like the things that you negotiate, the things about bargaining. Does that make sense? Like you don't want to do anything like that. And as board members, you should never have conversations. I should never have conversations unless it's with the union about anything, any kind of work-related pieces. I mean, you can't, you can't have those conversations and, and.
So things covered by the board.
Yeah, and that's what direct dealing is. And we didn't do that in that place. We were just, you can always listen and you can always get feedback. And that, that was our true intent, that's all we wanted to do. I mean, teacher voice has always been a huge part of how we treat districts because without a voice, we're making decisions that impact people we don't have a say. And that kind of halted everything for me because I wanted to make sure that we would do what was best for our teachers and that we were moving forward in such a way that they could have a reason, that they could do everything and to double check that we were doing everything correctly. And, but.
So Jennifer, I just want to clarify. So the Labor Relations Consultant is asserting that you can't have meetings with your staff.
Yeah, we need to.
Sorry. So Ann Thomas, who used to be a board member here. So she's saying that you can't meet with your staff unless the union representation.
I think what she was saying was that we can't direct deal with staff, which is, you can't. And so you want to make sure that that doesn't happen.
But you can still hold roundtables and have board members join you in engaging teachers and getting feedback.
Yeah, and we, we have a policy, I mean, that has that stuff. Like there's board policy.
I think we have contract.
There's contract.
We just go to in contract language, it spells that out actually.
Like if you want to go to your, I know we can talk about common policy, like the board policy, G E D, that's board-staff communications. I gave you, if the board wishes to maintain open channels of communication with staff, maybe sign a communication between board and the staff is through the superintendent. Staff members should utilize the superintendent, communicate to the board or the subcommittees. I mean, that's a policy that you could refer to. Because I, I mean, I tried to put this together because I want to make sure that we're doing things. Unions are important and we need to make sure that what we do is right and that we're finding voice and union voice in the right ways and.
But respecting that and also allowing for teacher voice to come through, you know, directly as well. I mean, I don't think the intent would be of our teachers to say, we don't want to be involved in and engaged in helping make these decisions. So I can see why it caused you to reel up your heels a little bit and think about how do I accomplish transparency? How do I accomplish authentic engagement with my staff if I'm being told I can't meet with them?
Right, and so we just want to make sure that the structures that we're using are proper and that we're doing things in the right way. So that's why it's called in June and want to make sure that everything is right and that we can do what's best. I mean, I, I understand that things are different here and that every school district is different in how they work and how they operate. And so I'm learning how different unions operate and how things are structured. So we just need to find a way to be able to work through this so that we can still get that voice, we can still get that participation, but make sure that we're not crossing lines and make sure that things are differentiated. But again, I think there are ways to do it, I just want to make sure that everything is covered. And look, go ahead.
So it's a different dynamic too for us as board members. We represent everyone that lives in this community and we have a large number of teachers and staff admins that live in this community. And I have seen a shift in recent months of, you know, I used to joke that before I got elected to the board, I would eat an apple in the grocery store so that I wouldn't be buying all the junk. And when I got elected, people are constantly coming up to me and I had to stop eating my apple because I needed to be able to speak. But recently I've had people, teachers say, I'm not allowed to talk to you. And I don't know, so specifically, what do I say in response to that?
You can always listen, there's never anything stopping you from listening. I just don't want you to talk about anything that would be related to or part of something that would be in the contract or could be associated with direct dealing. You can, if you have, if you want to ask for feedback or.
I mean, generally that's what it is, but it's not even me asking. Generally it's someone offering an account about something or I just wanted to let you know.
Yeah, just listen, I mean, and I mean, how's your day? What's your summer like? That's not anything that's going to get any kind of trouble. We can still be people and we need to be able to do that. And that's, that's perfectly fine, there shouldn't be any hesitation or any problem with any of that. I just, that's why I pulled back and I just want to make sure that we have those structures right and that things are in place and that the comfort level is there to be able to do those things. Because like I said, that meeting that we had was incredible and great things happened and were powerful at that meeting. And it was all around the strategic plan and a focus area that we had actually identified that we needed to work on staff well-being, on student well-being, on culture in January of 2022. Like it popped up well before.
That was part of the last strategic plan.
Yeah.
This is something I think all districts seek to.
We're not a do, so it wasn't, it's not like this is just something that just popped up or was new or we, so I just think that it's important that we look at that and that we address that. And.
Jennifer, before you go ahead, I feel like a meeting with the union is more to it at this point.
Absolutely.
That, you know, we, and I think.
So I'm, Jennifer, do you want to clarify right now?
Yeah.
I actually have reached out to both unions to meet with them. I think there's some misinformation. First of all, the only request to meet with the board was told to the Sherman Battalons. There's been no request of the board by either union. But we obviously care a great deal about the feedback from everyone that works in this district. So I have reached out to both unions to meet with the leadership teams of the unions. The O C team is looking at the dates that we offered, which is our next board meeting is June 9th, July 19th. That date didn't work for CFBA, understandably, it's summer. And they came back and proposed some additional dates, but they don't work with all of our travel schedules. So what I would hope we can do now is to look at our calendars. I think the last person that I have out of town currently scheduled is back on, August, on July 30th, is that right?
Yeah. So just to be clear, I am willing to interrupt my trip and come back for the 1950 Union Committee at work. If either, if either union is going to be here, I will, I will make that happen. But I'm, I'm supposed to be out of town at that time through the end of the month.
So right now, there's a plan to meet with the union. And there's also, Dr. Kaczarski, we're working on a plan for the future forum that respects the authority of the union and avoids any direct dealing and allows teachers.
To get their roundtables back.
To say what they want to say directly to you.
Well, to work through the roundtable process. I mean, we have to stay the course with the strategic plan. There was a lot of work put into that and it's very good work and they're very strong. And it's going to be important work for the district. And I just want to make sure that we have a plan that we can all work through together. And, and that's, that's kind of the place that we're at with making that happen. So more to come, but I just want to make sure that we have everything in place so that there's no confusion or misconceptions about what's actually happening.
So the after July 19th, our next meeting is a little bit away since August 16th. And I think we would all firm a meeting sooner rather than later. In terms of, I mean, generally around 5:00, it works. In terms of days, the first week in August, are there any dates that don't work for you?
For special meetings?
Now, I know Ben, like really the 16th, 16th, obviously we already have on our calendar, so as a last resort, we should, anyway, should reoffer that date and reoffer the July date that we already are in the meeting. But yeah, the first two weeks for the, I think.
Great, all right, thank you. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, but while we were on the subject, it's useful to hear everyone's calendars.
And that, that was really, I think, the work that we're doing. So I think we stay the course, we'll get to the other things. The other date scheduled will probably happen again after the 19th. So we'll look forward to getting, I'll get with you about scheduling those community meetings and those meeting greets and so that we can talk about planning and talk about other concerns in the district and work through that. And we'll get some more roundtables scheduled with teachers and work through that process. And look, I'll be the first to tell you that I know that my leadership style is probably very different than what some people are used to. If you want me to do small talk or social events and those kinds of things, that's really not my strength, but if you bring people together and work together and want to make, want to work towards bringing voice together and do listening and really make an impact, I know that that's the place to make a difference. I spent a lot of time in my previous district growing teacher leaders, whether it was administrators that wanted to, teachers that wanted to take an administrative role or teachers that wanted to go to become teacher leaders. And we had strong pathways for that to happen. We had tremendous success. For example, I never had more crew principals because we grew them from within. In fact, the first one that replaced me is someone that came up from within our system. And those are just really good things. And I just want to make sure that we have those kinds of relationships and those kinds of partnerships here as well. So that's what I look forward to doing. Teachers are so important and we just need to be able to make those things happen.
I just wanted to add that us on the board, I feel like our confidence in you comes from working closely with you and hearing just how much one-on-one you care about kids and how much you really know what you're doing and have that at the center of things. And like you said, obviously care about teachers too. They're the most striking in this whole thing day-to-day also. So I just look forward to the opportunity. And I know a lot of community members have the same experience of being working closely for strategic planning, so I just want to be sure.
Yes, please.
I'm sorry. I just wanted, oh, that's what it's supposed to sound like, got it, sorry. Just to recap real quick, I just want to say that the confidence that the board, I'm just speaking for myself, not the board, but that I feel like we have, the confidence that we have in Dr. Kaczarski comes from working one-on-one with her and seeing her, what her motivations really are in accordance to, I don't know why, something like all of the way now, because she just really cares about kids and that comes through a lot, one-on-one. And I just would like more people in the district to have the opportunity to have the one-on-one communication with her and just be able to have that. Just be good for our raw confidence.
Yeah, we had the opportunity, through strategic planning, with all the unions, to actually have this public teacher who participated. And it was fantastic, I mean, the perspective and it really, if we're going to move forward, I mean, you really have to have everyone at the table to have these kinds of conversations and that open communication. And we can handle the communication when union leadership is necessary, when it's a collective bargaining situation or when there's something covered by the contract. We obviously want to include the union and want to respect the collective, you know, communication. We want to, we want to respect the contract. But the idea that, you know, when I'm walking through Sherman Falls and I see a teacher and I say, how are you? And they say, I'm not allowed to talk to you. And that's why everything has to go through the union. So, no, that is, that is in fact a verb on multiple occasions. So that's too far, right? So we, we, I understand, you know, we want to respect all of that, but I also understand that, you know, we're all adults and we all, we all know each other. We're neighbors, we know my family's full of teachers' phone numbers. We all communicate with each other and we don't want to lose the spirit of what is made in Sherman Falls, Sherman Falls.
Yeah, I think that, that just resonates with me. I feel like we have such a history of strong relationships with our community and with our staff. And part of the reason that we have that is because we have established ways of doing things that, I mean, in some cases, what was that? In some cases, they're very specifically outlined in our agreement with the unions about if you have complained or dispute or something, there are very specific ways that these things are brought forward. You know, I think about my kids and when they have a conflict, you know, the best way to work it out is to talk to each other directly, not through an intermediary. And I know, you know, we can do better and we can get back to that at Sherman Falls because I think we're all pulling for all of our kids and all of our staff. And so the transparency and authentic dialogue is what's needed. So I'm really glad, I hope we can find a date sooner rather than later to bring the union leadership into discussions with the board so we can, you know, begin those discussions with them and really understand what's at the heart of this because so far we haven't received anything specific at our level. Maybe it's from received elsewhere, but we haven't had those conversations. So we walk on them and by moving in that direction because this is Sherman and we can do better with this.
All right, thank you. That concludes your report.
Your report, sorry.
Okay, at this point in our meeting, it's the opportunity for public participation. I know that some people have signed up in advance to speak and possibly this evening as well. Before we begin that, I have these parcels that I require you to read each meeting. The purpose of the board of education meetings is for the board to conduct its business. Board meetings are held in public but are not public forums. The discussion of agenda items is intended to be among board members, not a discussion with the public. The public participation section of the agenda is an opportunity for citizens to address the board. Community members who contacted the superintendent in advance of the meeting may be provided an opportunity to speak first. Public comment is limited to 30 minutes. Each participant will have three minutes to speak. No person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. Remember, this is a formal and official meeting of the board and what you say becomes part of the official meeting report. If your comment involves a problem with a student, employee, or board member, it's known to address them by name. Keep in mind that we are meeting in the schoolhouse and possibly in the presence of students. Following your public comment, if you have specific questions, please email superintendent@jennifer.kaczarski@shermanschools.org. Ashley. First sign up is Candace Reddick.
As the saying goes, people don't care how much you know.
As the saying goes, people don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. Dr. Kozarsky and members of the board, let me confess I say that I'm not here tonight to question your intelligence or your knowledge of policy and procedures. You all seem like you know that, you're very accomplished, very bright individuals. I'm also not here to question your ability to craft a solid strategic plan. Having sat on the High Quality Learning Committee, I know that you have gone to great lengths to prepare for the future. What I am here questioning, however, is your ability to connect and communicate effectively with those who have been called to lead. Through multiple conversations over the past month and over the last 20 minutes, it has become abundantly clear that there is a disconnect between the superintendent, board, and those on the front lines. Many teachers and staff members have expressed to me they are not feeling heard, valued, or appreciated, no matter how many formal roundtables you've put on the docket. The minimal efforts that have been made prior to June 9th, I understand that the June 9th date would throw a little cake in the wrench there, but the minimal efforts that have been made with our report have felt forced and unnatural. And a lack of acknowledgement and presence during special events and times of achievement have sent the message to these people that their hard work doesn't matter. As I shared with Mrs. Brode a few weeks ago, if this continues, it will not matter how beautifully crafted this strategic plan is. Things will slowly but surely fall apart. I know this because as an educator, I have seen it play out firsthand. At the beginning of my career, I worked for a superintendent who loved and cared for people well. His attempts to connect with the teachers through things like small talk with the students, with the staff, with their families, it was effortless. He didn't just know our names, he knew our stories, he knew our families and our accomplishments. And when he came to visit, he made you feel like you were the most important thing on his agenda that day. He was not the world's greatest business leader. He was not the most intelligent leader. But that didn't matter because he earned our trust, our respect, and our admiration simply by caring. His belief in us and his consistent and visible support pushed us to be the best educators that we could be. When he retired, things changed overnight. The board brought in a man who was by all accounts brilliant on the business side of things, but struggled for various reasons to connect with people on a personal level. He made minimal efforts to get to know those who worked under him. And over the next five years, I watched the toll that that took on the district that I grew up and loved and taught for 10 years. I'm talking 10-plus administrative turnover, multiple teachers jumping ship, including myself, and a drastic decline in staff morale, motivation, and overall performance. I fear that if this disconnect continues, the same trajectory is going to happen here in Chagren.
Good evening. I'm Brittany Anderson-Lasek and working alumni association with Calla Liker. I attended Sugar Falls Schools kindergarten through 12th grade. After four years away at college, I returned to teach in the district and just completed my 15th year of teaching and coaching. To say that I received a quality education at Chagren would be an understatement. To say that I had incredible teachers at Chagren would be a gross understatement. These teachers were the main reason why I switched my major from biology pre-med to biology secondary education, and I wanted to have the same impact that they had on me. It has been sad to witness and to experience the decline in teacher and staff morale in recent years. The current climate has been one of fear and uncertainty. I've watched creative, innovative teachers become fearful for what they can teach in their classrooms and have seen the lack of support from administration for them to have the freedom and the confidence to do what they have best at, educating children. This past year, I was one of several, several teachers subjected to an investigation by administration. They became aware of the issue in December and I found out in April via a formal letter that I was being investigated. The complaint was in my class the entire time and through the end of the school year. There was never a conversation or conference with a parent or child. There was never a meeting with my building administrator. There was never a discussion with administration in central office. An accusation by one individual completely disregarded over 30 years as a resident of the community, as a student, and as a teacher and a coach in the district. My hard work and character meant nothing and did not even afford a conversation with my leaders. It led me to completely doubt myself and question my trust in those that I should be working alongside. It is dumbfounding that the board has felt blindsided by how teachers and staff feel. We have been communicating our concerns through the appropriate channels and it is unfortunate that there's a break in that chain. I implore you to meet directly with your teachers so we can truly be heard and that we can go back to the classroom of law with the confidence and support that we know what is best for our students. Our current business of doing things takes away what we need to do, education. Thanks. Thank you.
Members of the board, Dr. Kozarsky colleagues, and members of the community. I've asked my colleague Tracy Goodenham to read this statement on my behalf and in my absence. My name is Karen Powell. I've had the honor of serving the students and families of the intermediate school as their head school counselor for the last nine years. On June 20th, I sent notice to the district and board of my intent to resign from my position due to administrative decisions that were made without consideration of how these decisions would directly and adversely affect my ability to fulfill my professional duties. In this role, I worked closely with district and faculty administrators and have only heard positive feedback about my performance. I've never been disciplined or investigated for wrongdoing of a tricked, accomplished by my current principal. I've ardently provided for the social, emotional, and mental health needs of my students and have been entrusted with competent members of this administration, colleagues, and parents. For nine years, I believed I was a valued and trusted member of this district until for no reason and without warning or discussion I was replaced, disrespected, disregarded, and stripped of the foundational tools I needed to be a counselor, under the guise of what's best for students. Even after multiple attempts at clearly expressing my concerns to administrators about the adverse effect that decisions would have on my role as counselor, the changes remained. Other than an acknowledgement by Dr. Kozarsky that my resignation had been received and accepted, to date I receive no communication from any administrator or board member regarding my decision. It is extremely disheartening to have dedicated nine years of service to this district and not one of my administrators that cared enough to reach out to discuss or attempt to work through my reasons for wanting to leave a job that I loved. I am incredibly grateful, however, for the overwhelming support I receive from my colleagues. Our district's theme this year was "This is Chagren, Write the Story." When I think of this is Chagren, it's easy for us to focus on all of the amazing accomplishments that we achieved, but my story and the story of so many of our staff is Chagren too. These are the stories that remain in silence and go swept under the rug. Why are you afraid to hear the stories of your frontline staff? Why is your staff afraid to tell you their stories? I was a member of the staff in the Student Wellness Strategic Planning Committee and wanted to be focused on the importance of forming meaningful and productive relationships to wellness. How does staff ever be well when this is a state of relationship with you? A relationship in which a blind eye is turned when staff is mistreated? A relationship in which we can't even start a conversation about what needs to change for fear of being the next one removed from our jobs? A relationship in which we see constant evidence that we are not valued, heard, and we're expected to flawlessly perform at unrealistically high levels only to be easily replaced? A relationship based on fear and mistrust? My hope is that as a district, you will truly commit it to the strategic plan as it relates to staff wellness. I hope that you will start to make decisions and engage in real conversations based on what's best for students and staff. I hope that you will commit to building mutually trusting relationships with staff. Only then...
Thank you, Tracy.
Only then will you be able to start to move towards wellness without making certain staff leave this district to achieve it. Thank you for that.
Good evening. My name is Courtney C. Holcar. As a teacher, coach, alum, and parent to recent grad, I maintain a diverse perspective of this district and a vested interest in its success. The adage "It takes a village to raise a child" illustrates the tradition of symbiotic relationships between community and school enticing many of us to return to Chagren to raise our children. But tonight, I am here to share some concerning patterns tarnishing that esteemed reputation and critical symbiotic relationship. Number one, teachers disappearing for prolonged periods without explanation and contact. Number two, teacher investigations growing exponentially. Number three, investigation duration lengthening substantially. Number four, final faults not correlating to the initial charge. Number five, employees leaving this district because of toxic culture. Number six, a pattern of not being heard, acknowledged, or supported. All of this led to a vote of no confidence for the first time in the history of our district. These patterns do not represent the symbiotic relationship of prestige, the fitting chagrin. Nowhere in the scenario of "It takes a village" do we see these unhealthy patterns or frontline voices ignored. Even our students attempted to be heard when creating a petition to support a teacher being investigated and within days accrued more than 800 signatures. Commendable. Many attempts to catch the board's attention were met without consultation or engagement for an entire month. I can't speak to the core of why that is, but I can no longer be a bystander. Damaging reputations and serving teachers, severing teachers from what they love and who they love is avoidable and insensitive. Investigating any human long enough will inevitably unearth flaws. Former board members and active board members from other districts share the ideal process is to run an efficient investigation that quickly restores teachers to the classroom, reassures parents and children they are safe with minimal educational disruption. Why is this not happening here? Furthermore, a path without respectful conversation will never yield positive change. Listening is step one in any symbiotic relationship. I ask the board to listen in good faith and humbly work to understand the breakdown so that we can heal. We shop in the same stores, eat in the same restaurants, send our kids to the same schools. We are too connected to sustain a cancel culture mentality. It is time to pivot, get things figured out together, because "It takes a village to raise our children" and "This town, this school are worth it."
Hi. This is a kind of confusing meeting for me, so I have to ask a question of the board. Dr. Kozarsky, can you publicly comment on claims and statements made on Facebook, articles printed in the Chagren Valley Times, press releases? Can you comment on pending investigations or litigation? I don't think so. I don't think I'd get this question. But everyone here, we can all say what we want on Facebook and that's the only reason I was informed of some of this. Even if it's wrong, it can be on Facebook and it can be at 145 comments. Maybe people talk about it in the grocery line at the pool. You know, I love a good debate and a good discussion, open, charitable viewpoints, as long as all of the information is available. And what I'm seeing as a community member, father, parent, and someone who works with children, I don't think we have all the information. And I'm a little concerned that the agitation that we have right now should be focused on adults, not on our kids, because for three years they've suffered. I work with students and their academic, social, and mental health have been a terrible hit. I've seen it in my work with students here and across the country. I'm sorry. I know everybody has a lot of concerns, but it's kind of time for adults to start focusing on students and their academic and social well-being. I'll admit, I was not comfortable with the union's decision to vote on the night of the presentation because a key group, all the people here, teachers, should have been there. They shouldn't have been stopped from intending one thing to go to another thing. They're supposed to be a key people. Why wouldn't teachers be discouraged from coming to hear about that or to learn about it or understand it? Were they a part of the process during it? I thought I saw a lot of them during the process, but I think that night would have been a great night for teachers to have been there. You know, I think Chagren's a lovely place to work. I'm sure there's individual complaints. I know I'm not a police person. I haven't been a small business owner for the last three years worrying about my world, but I think we have lucky, lucky with teachers that are great and I think we have a lucky school system with high-performing, well-funded, community-supported system. I think it sounds like there's been lots going on with investigations. I'll be honest with you, I don't blame you all. I have to blame parents and kids to some extent, you know? And I don't know if I'm aware of the process. I don't know if everyone here is aware of the whole process, but I am guessing from being around corporate America that you're obligated to pursue a process. I'm also guessing you can't say anything, as I said at the beginning. I don't know, maybe Jennifer, if you could wave a magic wand and make the investigations go away when you want to, that would be great. I'm sure I don't think that's there because I know that those processes were put in place to protect teachers and students and families. As for Jennifer, I've had the pleasure of working with you a couple of times over the last few years, just as I had with Bob when he was here. I found you focused on student success, not just your own goals. I think you're looking for academic improvement in a very high-performing school. I appreciate that you represent the outside voice.
Thank you, Sharon.
Barbara Linkin?
I beg your pardon, I have a list to sign up and if my name appears there, I apologize.
That's okay. If you might have accidentally, in the attendance, sign up, if you might have accidentally, accidentally signed up to speak.
That's everybody who has to speak.
All right. I've had this happen a couple times. Um, Dan Thomas?
I had not planned to speak, but I have to respond to the comments by the superintendent and by the rest of the board. Yes, we sent a cease and desist letter. Yes, we sent it because teachers in the meeting came back with reports of direct dealing. If you would like to know the intricate details of that, we will share those with you in a meeting, not in a public session. Unless you'd like us to do that, we're happy to have our meeting with the board in a public session since you felt that it was appropriate to be insulting to us in this session. As far as June 9th goes, the meeting with the unions was planned in advance. The invitation that the teachers received to attend the strategic planning session was sent out that day. That day, they were... You want to have an honest conversation? The cease and desist letter was met with zero conversation. Two meetings were canceled with the union president after the no confidence vote. They were canceled by the superintendent. Honest conversation? You can't have a conversation unless you converse.
All right, thank you.
All right. Continuing on.
Eight point oh five, our certified personnel contracts. We did a lot of high ones that we did. I think there are lots of pieces. Eight oh six should be classified, personnel contracts. Eight oh seven, there's no personnel. We continue with, sorry, supplemental. You have your transportation, summer staff, banking of staff. We have certified... We have certified personnel resignations. Additional hours, but those are like very professional developments. Everything that occurs over the summer. There's a wide variety of what those different kinds of curriculum, usually curriculum pieces are. Eight thirteen would be classified additional hours. You have FMLA, settlement agreements. And then that would bring us to treasurer recommendations.
I just want to comment on the certified personnel recommendation eight point one one. Obviously, I've already seen Mrs. Powell's resignation letter, and I've been a champion of her work for years. She's made a very valuable contribution in the lives of many students at the intermediate school, my own children included. And I was disappointed. It does appear it's filled under her resignation letter. Some breakdown in communication occurred in the process of adding what was intended to be an additional role to support our students. So I know you're already asking all those questions and hoping and figuring out how to make sure that we do things better the next time around, but I didn't feel the need to say that. You know, I'm disappointed that she chose to resign instead of bringing her concerns directly to you in a timely fashion. Does anyone else have anything to say?
Just that, you know, just to clarify, what our speaker said, or I guess what she said, that she was replaced, which wasn't the case. We added another position, which was part of our staff and student mental health and wellness. We wanted to grow our guidance capabilities. But I agree, there definitely was a disconnect. I think when somebody speaks to us that honestly about feeling unappreciated and being pushed aside, that their expertise and tenure and everything at the district didn't seem to be taken to heart, I think we need to hear that message really clearly and have some frank conversations about how that can happen. Because we don't want to lose good people. Certainly was not the intent of the district to replace her or drive her away in any fashion. So we need to do better.
All right. Ashley, please take the role.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Dr. Schaller?
Yes.
I am the treasurer's treasurer's recommendation nine point oh one, which is nine point oh two through nine point oh nine seconds. Ashley, would you like to say this, please?
Yeah. I can't organize here. My screen came out of my agenda. I got all the papers on the floor. Okay. Nine point oh two is donations. We have two items. One from John Corvath, which was a lung donor in snow lower. We're $700. We're $700. And then a wishing well planter, estimated worth of $500, and that was from Dennis Boyd. Item?
Where's the wishing well going?
That is going to be a, they're going to put plants in it. I think there was something special about how to actually use it.
Okay.
They're going to use it as a planter, and it's going at Gurnee. I don't know where at Gurnee, but I know that it will be a plant. That's all. Just that I just copied on anything.
Next one. Now, to be donated.
Yes. Yes, and then to this handmade.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah. I believe. You've covered that.
Sorry, I read your slide.
Yeah, that's great. And then you have Lasik. Are you going on here? Yes. I'm going to do my financial reports up there. But I had Lasik, and I can't see it close anymore. I still have to write. Like, for real. Sometimes it's totally fine, and other times it's only been like a week and a half. So it'll get better.
Let me know if you need me.
No, because I have some check numbers.
Is the TV on?
Nope.
Okay.
Do you have that?
Well, you may not want me to do that.
I did not understand.
I apologize. When Mike is here, this is all just magically happens for me, so I didn't think to turn. He's like a ninja. Sneaks in and I couldn't see him. So I might have to have you follow along on your devices, because this is not working. He's going to be on hold tomorrow when he sees this.
No, he's going to be validated. He is so necessary.
So the one that he needs. Maybe Ben first. I apologize.
Mike does this so we always remember how valuable.
I didn't leave the instructions. You just look me up or... Ah, there you go. Okay. Thank you, Ben. For just a second.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So on the agenda to be approved tonight are the detailed financial reports. I'm going to cover some slides. I'm not going to cover everything report. And I'm only covering May because that is most updated. But on your agenda to approve, you have April and May. So first report is the general fund summary report. This is the same report we produce every month. I put a little arrow there so you can kind of see where we're at as a fund balance. I don't want anybody to get too excited about that. And then you see in a couple slides, there's always a lot of activity in June. There are much higher expenditures than our revenue in June. So that is not where we're going to end up for the year. I don't want you to think, wait a minute, you said one number. Right now it's way higher. But right now, the number looks pretty nice. Next report is the general fund revenue. So I also called out for you where you can see May, because I know this gets toward the end of the year when I've got all of the months there. This gets a little bit busy. May, it looks like revenue is up from previous years. If you're looking at that bar, that orange bar right there represents this fiscal year compared to the four previous years. The reason for that is if you look at April there, right here, that was down. And that was because we did not receive our extended rollback monies timely. So this is just us catching up here. And you can see in previous years, that's kind of what had happened as well. Moving on to expenditures. Again, like I said, June is going to be up, which you can see has happened in the past couple years. This is where we're at right now. June expenditures will include all of our transfers and advances to other funds that we do at the end of the year. So that cash balance I showed you a couple slides ago is going to look more like what we expected it to. Again, I always like to point this one out. This was where in '20, we made a promise to the community to cut money out of the budget without affecting the classroom. We successfully did that and bumped our expenditure down. And then obviously, they do continue to grow. That's inflation and the way of the world, but...
Ashley, or staff. I think it's important that we did that ready of commitment that we would not do anything that would cut staff or impact student programs.
Right. So I know that people in the room heard Mrs. Rose, but if you're watching tomorrow online, and she's not mic'd up over there. So what she said was that it's also important to point out that we also made the commitment to make those cuts without affecting staff. We did not cut any staff to do that. And so it's just something that we, you know, we like to call out. By doing that this year, and you can see our expenditures at this point in 11 months into the fiscal year, our expenditures are what they were four years ago. So, you know, four years down the line, you would expect expenditures to be higher. And by doing what we promised to do, we're right where we were four years ago. So that's pretty good. Moving on to the cash fund balance report. Again, like I said, in June, this will go down, as it always has. This is just kind of our cycle, our cash cycle as we get taxes in. We have peaks in, you know, August and September when we get taxes. And then again, in February, March, when we get our taxes. And then we spend until, spend a little bit until the next round of taxes. Next report is the self-insurance fund report. And I know this is getting very long here. This is probably the last time you'll see all the way back to the inception of the fund starting next year. I'll either remove one of the year and just kind of keep a three-year running total, or just the prior two fiscal years. I have to see what it looks like and how it fills the slide. But this is just the inception of the self-insurance fund. And it's done exactly what we expected it to, exactly what we hoped. And that's a healthy balance right now. And we'll point out that in schools in particular, the summer months are when we have our highest claims, because people tend to, you know, put procedures off and things like that until the summer months when they're off. And so our claims will shoot up typically in the summer. So you might see that maybe tick down a little bit in the next couple months. And that's to be expected. So I might think it'd be super concerned about. Okay, so this is the financial summary of all of our funds. Again, this is the same one that we present every month. This column here is our cash fund balance. This would tie directly to our bank statements. And then a lot of the reports that we use, we talk about unencumbered balance. And so that's just our cash fund, what we have available in the bank, minus encumbrances and items that are all NPOs. Those are items that are on purchase orders, ready to be purchased. They are committed to purchases. So we talk about unencumbered balance a lot. And a lot of our budgetary requirements and the laws that we have to follow are based off this unencumbered balance rather than the cash fund balance. So copy of the bank reconciliation for the month of May. Left-hand side is all of our bank balances and all those adjustments. We have outstanding checks that are pretty typical, pretty typical amounts. And then all of these adjustments down here are items that you see month to month. Neo-Hiobax doesn't hit the bank when we send it immediately. That one's always lagging, you know? And then the STRS, some of those items, we send an ACH on those, and it doesn't hit the bank until after the month ends. Same for comp and then there's some other of these terrible items. This is just another picture of where our money is held. So this balance down here will trace back to here. This is just where we're holding everything. For people who are visual, like to see, like to see it, where it is, this is what it looks like. About 60% is still in Star Ohio. That estimated yield is over 5% now, which is fantastic. And then we're getting some really great rates in our investment management account also, which is where we have $10 million. Those are not as liquid as what is in Star. We have the use of that at any time here. Here, these are tied up in actual investment securities. For anybody who wants to see the actual securities and QSO numbers and all of that information. And all of those yields on every individual security, they are contained in the actual report, which is attached to the agenda available for anybody who wants it. So I kind of thought I would start what I'm calling an expenditure spot. Like, if somebody has a better name for that, feel free to suggest it. But I sat there for about five minutes trying to come up with a word. That's what I came up with, and I went down with my head. So I know I've put a lot of time into educating the community, the staff, on the five-year forecast. And so what those items mean and how things are divided out on that forecast. But within that forecast, there are a lot of, within each of those categories, there are a lot of categories that go into the individual, into those categories. A lot of categories. Categories, a lot there. But I kind of feel like it's time to now that everybody understanding the categories that go into the five-year forecast, I want people to start understanding what goes into each of those categories. So the first one that I'm going to focus on is legal fees tonight, because that's something that has kind of been a conversation across the state. I've had lots of conversations with treasurers. We've kind of called each other. We've had some public records requests. Here, we've mentioned Chagrin and other districts for the dollar amounts and what's happening with those. So just so everybody understands, legal fees go into, if you're looking at a five-year forecast or that summer report, which is the first report that I showed you, those are in line 3.03, and that's under purchase services. So purchase services is the larger category. So our, most of our reports with general fund are divided up by salaries, benefits, supplies, purchase services, and equipment. Legal fees fall into this purchase service line. Here, right now, it's 1.2% of our general fund expenditures this year. So that's through, through May and the reports that we're talking about is 1.2%. But what goes into that is, it varies. So our expenditures will go up or down from month to month, depending on what's happening. So a lot of times, you'll get a question about, well, what's your monthly legal bill? That's not a question we can really answer, because it changes every single month. There are lots and lots of things that we require legal counsel to weigh it on. This list here, I came up with in about three minutes. These are just items that I know of. And again, I am the accountant. I'm on the money side. I don't spend time in a classroom. I don't run a building. So I'm sure if I could take the time to call the principals or consult Dr. Kinsar City, we could double this list in about two seconds. But these are the things that I can come up with that we call legal about when we have to. So there are numerous basic ways. That line goes up and down. Overall, however, over the last several years, legal fees have gone up, and we're not immune to that. As the environment has changed, as changes in laws occur, and just the general kind of educational landscape with, you know, more pressure from the outside, more political pressure on public schools, more complaints being filed, those types of things, all of that affects legal fees for public schools. This graph right here, I created from a database that I have access to. And it's county-wide. So this red line here is Cuyahoga County over the last several years, going back to 2006. And then this bluish-green line here is statewide. So obviously, Cuyahoga County is higher. We have a higher cost of living than, say, southeast Ohio. Everything, every category of expenditures Um, everything, every, every category of expenditure is going to be higher in Northeast Ohio than it is in, um, Southeast Ohio.
Ashley, let me ask you a quick question.
Yes.
Um, teachers are obviously unhappy that there's investigations and investigations are increasing. We're seeing that trend.
Mm-hmm.
Students who have to file the complaints are probably unhappy because it's difficult to stand up and do that and to be brave enough to do that if it's necessary. Um, investigations are expensive. And as somebody noted, we don't control the timeline on those things in many cases. And many times there's an automatic trigger. Um, so it strikes me that the only people who are probably happy about this are the law firms and lawyers.
Of course.
Um, so how do we factor that in? How do you anticipate that growth? Um, how do we mitigate? Like, is that built into the fiber forecast? Is that something you're?
Into the forecast? So yeah, this is one of those items when, um, you know, I present the forecast and I go through each line and I tell you all the things that go into it. Um, and there are a lot of expenditure categories where, you know, I can pinpoint pretty darn close what we're expecting. Um, and then there are categories where I may as well just have a dart board in my office and just throw a dart and, you know, hopefully I'm close.
Really do that.
Do not do that. I said I might as well and say I do.
But you make an educated decision.
Yes, we, we make an educated decision. Um, and, you know, before I went into the database and produced this graph, I knew what it was going to look like, um, because, you know, we're all around. Um, obviously, some of this is due to inflation, um, which we can, you know, reasonably predict. And, and we have sources that, that we, that we go to when we're preparing forecasts to predict those things. Um, but as far as which of those categories that we're going to have high expenditures on, you know, that's not something we can really predict. So we do our best. Um, and as I'm sure you all know, I am very conservative in my estimates. Um, I always estimate high so that we're prepared for it, um, so that the budget is there when we need it, if we need it, um, and, you know, we just do our best. Um, it, it has ticked up. Like, if you, if you look at this graph, if you really, you really look at it, um, you know, there's an incline here from 2006 all the way up. In 2020, it went down, um, and that's, you know, very similar. Um, and that's because people, that was during COVID, kids weren't home. Um, so there was a lot less happening. There just, issues were not happening in the buildings. Um, and then we kind of, out of the pandemic and sort of, you know, our entire world shifted. People's behavior changed, um, and student behavior, I mean collectively, you know, community behavior. Um, all, all over. I mean, this is not, this is not a grid issue. This is, you know, a world issue. Um, and so you can see that that incline on those next two years was, was higher than it was in the past. I don't have 23 numbers yet. Obviously, 23 is not over yet. Um, and all of those numbers haven't been filed by the districts or, and we often close our books and, and file with the state before any of this can be accessible. Um, but everyone that I've spoken to within my networks and treasurers, and I would expect if I run this, um, in October, November, once these numbers start to become available for 23, that this is, these numbers, these inclines here on the next year are going to be even higher. Um, this was just, you know, it's just the way it will go right now.
Could you put back this line?
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure everybody, you, you did a really good job saying this covers a lot of different things. I immediately think about our board policy provision. We're, we are in a complete overhaul.
Yes.
And I was part of that process five, six years ago. And it is very intensive and very weird intensive because our policies have to respond to the legal landscape and any current legal change. So my guess is that that is a huge piece of what's in there. We'll be in there for 23 as well. And also, I just want people to be talking about investigations. I want anything going in on this is all investigation or it's not. We obviously engage with attorneys. We have procedures that we follow on any employee in the district. As I said earlier, nobody is immune. And we go through the same rigorous, embarrassing process for any employee. And I think, you know, Jennifer, you just went through that yourself. And we're sorry that you had to go through that, but we're really glad that we did our diligence and that we thoroughly investigated the claims and found that you really were to fault. So anyway, just to retrain the discussion that it's not just investigation. Right. Board policy is a huge undertaking this year.
And it was a negotiation year.
Right, and it was a negotiation year.
I assume this is spike.
That's true.
Typically, you'll see, um, in the negotiation year, you'll, you'll see, you'll see spikes. Um, we negotiated the previous year as well. So it's not like it'll be like, you know, some huge number.
Right.
Um, but yeah, I mean, it, 10 years ago, um, that would show, you know, you'd be able to look at somebody's graph and be like, oh, that was a year in the negotiation. Now, it's not necessarily that way because there, there are just so many other things that, that play into that number. Um, you know, the number of public records requests is, you know, in the last three years, more than is averaging for every single public school district in Ohio for, um, other government lines based, not just schools. Um, and a lot of times those are simple and it's, yep, the record exists, here it is. Um, other times it has student information in it and I have to go through and redact it. And I have to, um, sometimes I have to make a call if even having, you know, in an email or something, having he or she has to be redacted because that could maybe identify me because there's only one student, only one female student in that Spanish class. Or, you know, anything that can personally identify that student, I have to figure out how to redact it. Sometimes that requires input from the lawyer. Am I allowed to do this? Do I have to do this? Um, you know, where is that, that line is producing?
And it's a good point because we don't really think about the inherent cost in the department. Or we don't think about how much time our administrators, administrators spend in this environment, how much of their time is devoted to doing things based on complaints and requesting information, um, and how much outside of council time is swept in to make sure that in this environment where there is just, people are just more litigious and there's more complaints, there's more things happening. It's not just, as you said, um, teacher discipline issues or concerns about teachers, but it's across the board. Um, I've talked to friends in all sorts of different professions who said they're simply seeing more litigation, more things are disputed. Maybe it's getting done or maybe it's not, it's hard to say. But it does seem to be something that is going to change, that we've seen in the last few years post-pandemic. And I don't know if it's going to correct or not.
Yeah, there've also been, um, there's an increase in the number of laws that change. Um, and every time something changes, we have to look and see how it, how it affects us. Um, there's little things that are slipped into a budget bill and columnists that now creates this new requirement that, you know, doesn't necessarily make a difference with budget. Um, all of that kind of stuff, you know, it, it requires some, not just research and not just, you know, us reading the laws, which we can do. Um, and the things that we do regularly, we become experts on. You know, I think I'm pretty darn good at, um, Ohio Public Records Act. And I would say, you know, Jen Fano is probably pretty darn good at I D E A. Um, but there are, when things change, you know, we have to make sure that we're protecting our students and our staff and the district and our, our taxpayers.
You don't have to apologize.
No, I'm not. I just want you to understand.
That is, that is being professional. That is our job.
Absolutely. It's, it's 100% our job and we're doing it. We do it well. Um, I just, I, I want everybody to, to start to get an understanding of, of what goes into some of these expenditure categories, um, rather than just looking at high level.
Yep.
Expenditures are going up. Yeah, and they are. Um, and a lot of that's just due to inflation and a lot of this is due to a lot of other outside forces.
Right. Which is a good point because the reason we incur legal fees is to protect the tax base ultimately, on a, on a most basis.
And staff and students.
Well, of course. But when there's litigation, then it grows from those things. Typically, it's not us necessarily, it's the tax base.
So one more thing I forgot to point out, um, on this graph, and I just think it's important, is that this is not total dollars, this is dollars per student. Um, so, yeah, a lot of, you know, a lot of the things that we do, we can compare total dollars and it makes sense. Um, but when you're talking just one expenditure category, you really have to break it down to each student because clearly a city of Cleveland is going to spend more, um, on legal fees than a.
Depending on the larger district.
They have a large school district, they have more staff, they have way more students, they have, you know. Um, so the larger districts, obviously, are going to, they have larger budgets. They're going to have a larger expenditure. So it's not apples to apples if I try and compare just total dollars. So I, I put this in dollars per student just to kind of get as close to apples as apples as we have. So that's all I have. Um, do we like my expenditure spotlight? Do we want to continue that type of thing? And I keep, or is this, Ashley, you're going way too far with the weeds.
Yeah, I think that's right. Every, you, you focus on one particular thing to do a little bit of, and I think that helps bring all of us along. It actually is, makes it more interesting than just, because we see the financial reports on regular basis and we look at them to make sure that everything's lined up. So I liked it, I was right.
Well, and it also highlights the challenges of forecasting.
Challenge of what?
Forecasting.
Yes, forecasting, I hear you.
Um, Ashley, do you want to run? I have to start right now.
Um, I got other items on my agenda. I'll say, okay.
Give me a report and then.
Equipment disposal. Okay, yes. Um, yeah, equipment disposal, there's your typical types of equipment on there, um, as well as some textbooks that we are getting rid of. It's not really a policy that we do this with the same mechanism that we do, um, equipment, but it, it does provide us a nice, um, paper trail on, on the disposal of those that we've maintained, we've kept doing that. Um, inter-fund transfers, 9.05 is inter-fund transfers. These are transfers from the general fund. Um, the transfer numbers, if you're going to go back and look at my forecast when I told you we would be transferring versus what we are transferring now, this is actually a lower number. Um, so some of our funds did better. Um, but I want you to remember that when I move to the advances, the transfers are lower. Um, one other thing I want to point out there, um, the permanent improvement fund, one that does include the, um, the typical P I that we transferred for the, um, just to cover the operations in that fund. It also includes the $40,000 that we gave annually for the stadium and the $500,000 for the bus garage. So that makes that up, that number. Student managed activities is.
That's the last transfer for the bus garage.
I'm going to have to look, obviously, I'm sorry.
I like it, I can do it. I don't remember. I'll look.
Um, the student activities is, um, represented by money that we transfer each year to Tanger Times, um, Kumbala Society, and Cypher Band. And then these district managed activities is made up of Prism, Band, Forensics, and then the Athletic Fund. Okay. How you are about those low numbers? We're going to move on to the advances. We're going to see some high numbers here. Um, these are the highest advances that we have advanced to funds since I've been here. And the reason for that is if you look at that third line down, the 507, Fund 507, the extra federal grant money, that's almost a million dollars I transferred. Um, all of these federal grants, we transfer money to at the end of every year to cover negative fund balances. Um, and those are because we spent a little money, then we ask for the money back. But, and that is the proper, um, the proper procedure of the federal grants. However, there's an Ohio revised code section that says we can't have any negative fund balances at year end. So what we do is advance money out of the general fund to cover that, get rid of that citation, then start the fiscal year, and then we move the money back.
So let me just break it. So in other words, we're currently spending our S R money, but we don't get refunded that much without revenue until we spend it all. And so you go to cover it in between.
Not all of it. You don't have to spend it anyhow. It's just you spend first, then you request, then it comes in. Um, and that is the largest grant amount that we have spent in a very long time. It's great. Happy about it.
Spent wisely.
Spent very wisely. Um, we used it on allowable things. There were some pretty large expenditures for the H B A C projects, um, the more allowable S R expenditures. And that, that's where we, um, focused most of, of those dollars this year. Obviously, the past couple of years, there were a million other things that we used it for. Um, but I just wanted to point out the reasons for that because I, I know if you're just looking at previous years and then you come here and you see this number, you're probably thinking, Ashley, what are you doing? Um, just trying to get us out of a budgetary citation. And then, um, after we close the year, we'll move it right back to the general fund. And then this will all be reversed by, um, federal grants, um, except for those first two there. The first one is the robbery fund, that's our Excel tech. Um, and that one is typical too. We need that every year, um, as we're waiting on, um, tuition payments to come in from the other districts that participate in that. Um, and then the O-19, this is the first one, the first time we've had to do this, um, for the local grants fund. So that's where we record all of our grants from our, our P T O, our foundation, all of our support organizations. Um, and typically, there's, there are lots of, um, special cost centers within that O-19 fund. Typically, we'll have a cash balance in those that kind of covers, um, some of these reimbursements that, that we spend out. Because we do the same thing with those grants that we do with our federals because the procedure works, um, it works well. We spend and then the support organizations reimburse us for the exact dollar amount that we spend so that they don't, um, you know, if they award us a grant for $5,000 and we spend $4,000, $4,700, then we don't just hold on to that $300, they keep it. They just give us what we actually spend. Um, so we do the same thing. And typically, we have some cash in there that will cover those negative balances. This year, we've had a lot of activity, which is great. Um, and we are very appreciative to our support organizations for these, all these activities that we do with their money. Um, but this year, there's, there was so much activity that there's a negative fund balance and that right now we need to cover. So just so we don't get cited. Again, same thing to federal grants. Once those are done, they have to reimburse us for those grants that they have awarded. So we appreciate those. Um, okay, moving on to 9.07. This is the final appropriations for fiscal year 2023. Um, only thing I want to point out there is that general fund number is higher than what you had approved in the beginning of the year. There's typically changes within all the other funds. The general fund pretty much stays consistent because that's such a large number. Um, it's higher because of those advances that we need to advance out. Um, and then 9.08 is the fiscal year 24, permanent appropriations for next year. I don't think there's anything, um, that's not expected on there. If you looked at our tax budget that we did, um, that we approved in January, you'd probably see some pretty close numbers to this. Um, and then 9.09 is our, um, property and liability insurance. We approve this every year in June. Um, this year, it is a different program. Um, we put a lot of time and research into looking at different options and, um, to see what would be best. We wanted, I mean, we've had great insurers in the past, um, but we wanted to see, you know, just make sure that we were, we were getting the best for our dollar. Um, and what we came up with was, um, a non-traditional insurance format, the Ohio School Plan that we're going to go with after a person I did less of research. Um, and it's going to save us, actually, the, the amounts, the dollar coverages are going to be higher than what you've seen in the past. Um, and our premium, we're going to save about $50,000 a year. So, um, really couldn't pass it up. You know, we've been happy with our insurance in the past, but $50,000 a year savings to our taxpayers is something we couldn't, uh, we couldn't not do. I'm recommending you recruit all of these items.
Nice job. Uh, Ashley, let's take them all.
This is Bruce.
Yes.
This is Bethel.
Yes.
This is Gary.
Yes.
This is Miller.
Yes.
Does anyone have any other business to do? Seeing none, our next meeting.
That is actually incorrect, Ellen.
Yes. Our next meeting is, I keep messing up this date.
The date is correct.
Yeah.
It's July 19th at 5:30.
July 19th at 5:30 in Stan's conference room.
Yes, we did send out a notification of that change in time.
Okay. Um, Sharon, you'll let us know, um, if we were able to work out when the meeting will be? Okay. Um, I move to adjourn, can I have a second? I'll second. Ashley, let's take them all.
This is Bruce.
Yes.
This is Bethel.
Yes.
This is Gary.
Yes.
This is Miller.
Yes.
I know. I know.